Glad you didn't to the flag.
Flag.
Of the United States.
America. And to the Republic.
Republic for which it stands.
Stands. One nation. Under God.
Indivisible.
Indivisible. With liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Hey, Kristen, would you please introduce everyone?
Sure, this is Kristen Powers. I'm going to run through the participant list. There are a couple of email addresses and other titles, so I might just ask you to clarify what you'd like to be listed in the minutes as. Members, select board members in attendance this evening, we have Mike Beecher, John Malcolm, Ed Cleveland, Bob Jones, and Chuck Whedon. Others in attendance, we have myself, Kristen Powers. We have Frank Nelson, Jim Sheldon, Nancy Morleano, Jessica Van Orte, John Sabatka, Tom Collard, Maureen Brown, Harry Van Meter. We also have Gretchen's iPad in the house. If you'd like to be listed in the minutes, you're welcome to indicate. You are muted. Sorry.
I'd be Colin Stavial.
Thanks, Colin.
You betcha.
And then we also have S T O N B R O K at Vermontel.net. If you would like to be indicated, you are welcome to do so. And I believe that's all. If there's anybody else who would like to have their name listed in the attendance list, please say so now.
Okay, I believe that last one is Fred Stone.
Okay. Cool. And we have, let's see, it looks like we have Rich Hewlett also joining. And right now, I've just admitted. In addition, just a friendly reminder to everybody. This meeting is being recorded for Peg TV, so the meeting is being run this evening by Chairman Mike Beecher, so please address questions to Mike, who will also indicate when it is your time to speak. Also, please introduce yourself before speaking this evening. Thank you.
All right, everybody, everybody have a chance to look over the minutes.
Two additions, real quick to Mike, sorry.
Okay.
One addition, appearances by local citizens and visitors. We have Jim Sheldon here this evening, and also under new business, I wanted to talk to the board about the warning for the organizational meeting that will be held after the town meeting. And that's no deletes.
Okay. So approval of the minutes. Everybody have a chance to review the minutes. Didn't see anything that I didn't agree with. Does anybody have any questions or comments?
John, this is to approve the minutes.
Okay, John.
This, I'll second that.
Ed will second the minutes. All in favor? Any more discussion? All in favor? Chuck?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Okay, minutes passed. Thank you. Pre-requested. Jim Sheldon?
Um. Yeah, go ahead. I think I got you, right?
Yeah, you're all set.
Mike?
Yeah.
Basically, this is Chuck. Basically, we we got an email from Kristen that Jim was going to speak this evening. And those of us who read the minutes pretty much understand that James, who owns the property where his snow cross track is located, is wishing to have a race on a particular weekend. Jim, can you speak for the rest of it?
Yeah, it's, I was hoping to do a charity event. I think there was an email should have been sent out to everybody that was members. And I seem to, just to kind of briefly go over it, there seems to be a lot of charity events that are getting shorthanded these days. And my kids race snow cross around the Northeast. And we thought that it would be a great thing for a weekend fundraiser for, you know, a couple of the charities. And we picked the West Pollet and Pollet Fire Department to have an event with proceeds to be donated to each one of the volunteer fire departments in equal. I guess maybe, pretty much, I don't, do you want, do you want to, what would you like me to explain, I guess?
Okay, so what are you, what are you looking at for the select board?
Well, I was just wondering, I guess my question is, is that, one, does the select board need to vote to have this as a fundraiser? I mean, I don't think I've ever seen the church or anyone else having to do anything. I just wanted to make sure that I was on the up and up by having this happen in town. And if people did not want to see something like this happen, I wouldn't waste my time in trying to do it. So I guess I'm out there trying to put myself out there with my family to be able to raise money for charitable causes in town that seem to be shorthanded these days.
Well, right now, the governor's guidelines say that no social events for COVID, for spread of COVID, to maintain the spread of COVID.
It.
So that would be a breach of what the governor has stated.
Outdoor gatherings, if I haven't read them right, the outdoor gathering said that you can have 150 people separated by 25 feet of event of space to another 150. And according to what I've read, and I don't know, I could be wrong, if you know better, they've suspended indoor stuff, but nothing to do with outdoor stuff. And that's why I came up with this event, was because it is an outdoor event. And I, and I checked into it, I looked into it with the state, and unless something new has happened, outdoor has been 150 people with concession, parking, and restrooms by 25 feet of separation to another 150, if that was the way you wanted to separate it, with COVID tracing being involved. And we're, we're heavily looking out for the, for the public, and we do not want this to be a spreader event. And I think with the way it is around the area here, most people can park inside their vehicles and watch from their vehicles at a safe distance away.
Okay, I, Kristen?
This is Kristen. The only thing that I, I saw the same thing about the 150 people outdoor. The only thing I think that I did see that would be a little sticky is the interstate travel. Technically, at this point in time, folks aren't supposed to travel across state lines without a two-week quarantine. That was the only other detail that I saw. Thank you.
Um, this is Ed. What's the difference, what's the difference between this and going skiing? At one of these ski areas? They seem to have no problem, they seem to have no problem going to a ski area.
Well, I don't, I don't have a copy of, of the outdoor gathering rules in front of me, and I didn't get a chance to look at them today. But is there, is there any other permits that would be necessary for you to have this function on your property? James from the town or, or from the state?
I don't believe so, as far as I know, as it's, as it's being run as a charity event. We're not looking to profit anything off of this. We're looking to help people in the community be able to do, raise some money is what I'm looking to do. And that's, that's, that's all I'm looking to do.
Okay.
And I think that when I looked at it pretty heavily to help you out, and the guidelines for outdoor was, was very, it has stayed the same because it's been outdoor. And it's, it's pretty clear, you know, it's 150 people per area, per concession, per parking, per, I don't know if anybody ever went to Devil's Bowl over the summertime, but Devil's Bowl Speedway up there, they ran all summer long, abiding by these outdoor conditions. And I haven't seen any of these conditions change.
Okay. At, to my knowledge, you've never had to do any kind of permitting for any event from, from the town other than liquor licenses? Does anybody have any other feedback on that?
I guess my point was, Mike, was I just wanted to put it out there to select board. And I think in the email, I just wanted to make sure that, you know, residents were notified that, you know, something like this would be happening, instead of just have it happen. I guess that's what it is, which I'm trying to keep it on the up and up, be able to raise as much money as possible, do the COVID tracing. And I, I, like I said in the email, if people got to read it, is I'm looking for help with the community. If there was people that wanted to volunteer, I mean, I know some people are really scared of COVID, and some people, you know, are not so much, and can social distance. And, you know, they go to the grocery store, they go to Walmart. And I'm hoping that we could have this be a non-spreader event that's safe for the community and also benefiting the local charities that we're involved in.
Does anybody else have any comment on this?
Yes, John does. I was wondering, James, what your conversations with Jonas Rosenthal, our zoning administrator have what has been the result of your conversations with him?
I haven't had any conversations based upon having a race.
Uh huh. My second question is, why aren't the fire departments involved? I talked to John Weiss and Bob Morleano today, and they are not involved with this.
Well, I talked, I talked to John, and John was for it. And then I guess it went up to the Pollet Fire Department, and they were looking to vote on it soon. And I guess Morleano was the only one that seemed to have a problem out of the whole fire department. And I figured that, you know, if some people were were a little skeptical of COVID, then I didn't really want to have a fire department that volunteers their time. I don't believe personally that a, that a fire department that volunteers their time should have to raise their own money. That's my opinion. So I figured that I would help them raising money. The people that wanted to be involved could be involved. And then we would just give them a check for the proceeds. And then the people that didn't want to be a part of it didn't have to be a part. I guess that's, that's my thoughts.
Am I correct in saying that Jonas has not said okay? Or?
I, I haven't even asked Jonas about this. This, this was brought directly to the select board, John.
Why?
Why not? I mean, I don't see where I need a permit for a charity event. Is there, do you know?
Well, I don't think a charity, a charity event doesn't allow a non-prescribed activity. It's almost like an inducement, especially when I hear the fire departments aren't involved themselves.
Where, where do you find non-induced compliance? Where, where do you get that from?
Well, this is what I want to know. What is?
No, no, I'm just asking you, you're, you're stating that there's a non-compliant issue, and I want to know what the non-compliant issue is.
So do I. That's why I think that going to the
Well, I don't, I don't, I've talked, I've talked with Jonas, and there hasn't been a non-compliance issue of any sort that I know of. In the fire department, I talked to John himself, which was the fire chief. He thought it was a great idea. He took it back to the fire department. Seventy-five percent of the fire department, from what I was told, was, was for it. I've had, I've had
I got an email from John at 2:00, 2:05 today, this afternoon, stating that they were not involved.
Yeah, I haven't, I haven't brought them involved in it because I didn't know who would be wanting to be out there in case they didn't want to be a part of COVID. So I'm not going to say that, like I said, I'm not going to make people try to raise money that are scared that they might be putting themselves in danger.
Well, it's beyond the fact. It's, I think the question is whether it's a legal activity in the town of Pollet, which is be to the zoning administrator.
Oh, this is, this is Ed. Since when has it become illegal to have a snowmobile race on your own property or any other type of gathering?
Wait, John, John had one more part of the question, and Jonas had, had some rule. The last time this came up, Ed, Jonas had, had regulations that were state mandated about the size of gatherings and whether it turns into an Act 250 issue or not, what the, the legal zoning is on each, on each property. John, you had one more part of a question there?
No, I just think we need to have a ruling from our, I don't know what power we have to regulate activity that's non-zoning. We found that out with another situation. But I don't like situations that, that could look like by having it as a charity turns into making something that may be illegal, legal. I give a lot of, our department, in fact, I just gave them $200 this, this week. So I'm not, and they'll be happily accept any money.
Okay, so a couple of meetings ago, Jonas, we had this conversation, and you were here, Jim. And Jonas said that you would have to get a permit to have an event of such thing from the state because of the size of the property that it was on. And it was not part of, it was not clearly spelled out in the, in the Ag Residential Use Rules in the zoning for the town of Pollet.
I didn't, I didn't, I didn't gather that same thought from him, from talking to him. But if that's what your take is on it, then that's what your take is on it. Because I, I, I'm following the same guidelines that no different than a deer hunter goes onto his property, takes a recreational four-wheeler on that property, and shoots a high-powered rifle. There's no, there's no difference. And in the bylaws under Ag Residential Zoning, it says that, it says right in there that non-commercial permitted by the landowner recreational vehicles were permitted. And as long as I'm not having a race for commercial purposes, I'm not violating any rules. And I'm looking, like I said, I'm not looking to have this to be a commercial event. It's a one-time thing like we've had before. We've had drag races on this property. We've had go-kart races. We've had all kinds of stuff that have been no problem in the, in the previous past. And all we're trying to do is help the community members and raise money for it and not take a dime for it. And if, if they don't want, if we don't want to have it, then that's totally fine.
We can't just have an event that isn't, that isn't sound, that isn't in compliance with all the local and state zoning regulations. And that's why we need to make sure that the zoning administrator has, has approved this whole project.
Um, Mike, this is Ed, Jessica, Jessica, I think has some.
Oh, yeah, I didn't even see that. Jessica, go ahead.
I know Jonas isn't here, so I won't speak for him, but we did, he did, he did bring up this, the topic in, in his report that he gave to us last night, which is that, and what I wanted to say was that it's, it can be, it was hard for me to understand at first, but when something is listed in our zoning bylaws as permitted, that means you can do it with a permit. It doesn't have to go to conditional use review, but you do still need to get a permit for it. So permitted doesn't mean you can just do it and that it's exempt. That would be exempt. Like making a tiny building, you know, like a little shack that's under 100 square feet, that's exempt. But the, the things that are listed in there as permitted uses are uses with a permit, just as, as a, as a point of order from the planning commission. Thank you.
Thank you.
So this, Ed, again, I've just got another question here on, so if someone was going to have, say, a wedding next spring, next summer, you're going to have to get a permit for it on their property?
With the zoning administrator not here, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't answer that on my own.
Yeah, that was more of a comment than a question.
Okay. I'm not really, I'm not really sure. So 150 people or max for a gathering of outside like that? So I guess the way I see the discussion is that it would need to be determined by the zoning administrator if that was a, a use in compliance with our, with our zoning bylaws.
So I have a question.
Okay.
And that is my question is, how are you going to control that it's 150 people? If you're allowing carloads of people to come in, are you going to do a head count as they approach the facility, Jim, and then keep track? And when you get to 151, you're going to turn people away?
Well, the way, the way the rules are, is that yes, we do have to have, do all COVID tracing. So every person would have to have their name and address as they would sign into the facility. And then as they signed into the facility, the way the rules are, the rules say 150 people with their own parking, with their own restroom, and their own concession, separated by 25 feet of separation, which I don't, I don't quite understand that. And then you can have another 150 people, as long as those people can't be interacting with the other people.
Okay, so now my question is restroom.
There, there would be portable restrooms at each site for, between racers would be one area, and spectators would be another area.
And then where, are you going to sanitize? So my, my issue is related, you know, to the whole COVID transmission thing, and that is, so now if you have restrooms, a lot of these places are going in and sanitizing between people for
Yeah, there will be all, there will be all the hand sanitizers and everything inside those. Anytime I've ever seen like an outdoor event, they've had hand sanitizers in there so that people could sanitize as they use it. You know, like, like Walmart has, I guess, when you walk through the door or the grocery store, you know, nobody sanitizes your, your, your grocery cart. You do it for yourself.
Then based on what you just said, that it could be in excess of 150 people, because you said there could be two different groups?
But yes, that's the way, that's the way the state of Vermont law reads. And they would be separated by, by however many. So basically, when you came through the driveway, what we would do is we'd take everybody's name, they'd sign a waiver, they'd put their address on there, and then their, their address would be the COVID tracing. Then they would be directed to the spectator area or wherever the race area was going to be for the people that raced. The spectators would actually sit in their car. They wouldn't even be expected to get out unless they had to go to the bathroom. And then they would go use the portable restrooms with the hand sanitizers in them. And then they'd be able to do what they had to do, and then come back to their vehicles to watch from their vehicles. I hope that helped you answer that.
So the way I see it right now, that we don't know that the, the permits are in place, so the next step would be to deal with Jonas and make sure that this is a, this is a use that's in compliance with our zoning regulations.
So I guess, I guess my question to that is, Mike, is the, is the Pollet Church, whenever it runs suppers and stuff, I mean, do they get permits? I mean, does, also does tax sales in the town of Pollet, where people accept money and people come onto their property? I mean, these all permitted things too? I mean, we're trying to run a charity event. We're not trying, I'm just trying to raise money for charity here. And that's all we're trying to do. And I'm just asking the question, if all these permits have been filed by all these other people as well for a charity event? Because I know the library, the library does book sales and stuff like that. I mean, are these people commercial now without a permit, I guess?
Okay. Julie, you have your hand up?
Yeah, I guess that my question is that, that seems like there's a lot of questions, and I just wonder if this is actually in the purview of the select board to deal with. And if not, then it could be set aside, and it needs to go through other town channels, because there's only a limited number of things that select boards have the authority to deal with. Is this one of them? If we don't know, then we certainly can take the time to find out. But if it's not one of them, then it shouldn't be occupying our time at our meetings.
It seems like it's a zoning administrators to me. Ken, did you have a question? You have to unmute, Ken.
Yes, thank you. Statement on portable restrooms from before was a farm that I go to up, you can hear me?
Yeah, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, farms that I go to up, up Middlebury Way, that have horse show, horse shows during COVID, have portable restrooms with hand sanitizer instructions to sanitize on your way in and sanitize on your way out. And they've run, you know, I don't know, there were 150 people there probably, that was back in July, August. I don't know how many people were there, but, you know, numbers.
Okay, thank you. Chuck, you have a question?
Well, my question to the board, do, when James goes to Jonas, what, is Jonas going to come back to us? Or is Jonas just going to speak for us? And if James fills out the proper paperwork, then I would make a motion that we as a board would support or not support James on Sheldon property holding an event which the fire department's reaped the benefit of. So I don't know what else you want, but I think just for Jonas's idea that we as a board should vote how we feel about this that James wants to do.
Okay, it's, the, the decision is to be, is to interpret the bylaws as all, the zoning regulations is all up to Jonas. So really, this, it's, it's the interpretation of all the zoning regulations that he'll have to review. that he'll have to review and, and make a decision on that. But as far as the select board goes, it's, if you wanna make that motion and get a second, we can vote on it.
Can I, can I ask a question, Mike?
Yes, Jim.
Um, the, the question is that I have, is Jonas in charge of every charity event that goes in the town of Polat? I mean, does everybody go, is he the authority for Polat for charity events?
He's the, he's the zoning administrator, he, he makes sure that the actions in the Polat are all in guidance with the, the zoning regulations, unified bylaws that we've adopted.
So I, I know you kind of briefed on like Act two fifty and stuff of that nature. I mean, are all these, are these other events? I mean, are they all going through Act two fifty, these charity events? Is a question through Jonas?
That would be a question he would have to answer.
I guess my question is, is that I've lived in Polat all my life and I thought that charity events were just for what they are, non-commercial. You know, raise money for local support of, uh, of things that go on in Polat. I mean, I support all that. I support the library. I support all of them when they, when they send letters out. I wanna see them all do good.
The, like I said, there are questions for Jonas to answer. We, we can't, we, we're at a stalemate right now. There's, there's a whole bunch of questions that we can't answer.
Yeah, this is Ed, I think it's a little premature. I, I think it's a little premature. It's kind of like putting the cart before the horse. Uh, Chuck's motion, I think maybe we should wait until, well, I guess basically let the zoning administrator handle it.
Right, so Chuck, you made a motion, but someone would have to second it for us to act on it. Does anybody wanna second Chuck's motion or?
The only, the only reason that I'm speaking the way that I'm speaking is that James is wishing to do something on a certain date. And the longer it goes on, the less chance he's gonna have of doing anything because we all know that the season is dwindling. So James, I've done my best on my final little ride. So, uh, I wish you luck, man.
So Jonas will be in the office tomorrow.
I was gonna say, I would say, see Jonas tomorrow, let's get it settled.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we're all done with pre-requested? Kristen? Okay. Announcements?
No announcements.
No announcements. Um, do we get a, a report from the zoning administrator to involve in some action and castle thing?
I did not receive, this is Kristen, I did not receive any report from the zoning administrator this evening.
Okay. Planning Commission, do you have anything to report tonight, Jessica, even though your meeting was only last night?
Yes, I do have a report and I,
I, this is Kristen, sorry, I did send Jessica's report to you guys, but I didn't get to do it until shortly before the meeting. So my apologies, but you do have that in your inbox the next time you visit it.
Okay. Please go ahead, Jessica.
Uh, thank you. I'm going to, I'll summarize what is in the report. We have good news, which is that last night the planning commission was able to, um, to vote on and approve. I'm getting a feedback here, so let me pause a second. Okay, hopefully that fixed, fixed that. We were able to vote on and approve a slightly updated version of the bylaws, which is what we need to move forward with to readopt them to finally make the transition to the ten acre town. So I have, I have sent out to all the select board members a copy of our, again, very slightly edited version of the twenty seventeen bylaws. There are four things that we changed. Two of them were things that were required by updates to state law since twenty eighteen. And Ed Boeb sent me the necessary language for those. We have a small update to language around multifamily dwellings and an update to accessory dwelling units. Again, both of those are because of the state. The other thing that we did, the other two small edits are to incorporate the language from an amendment that was proposed, I believe, two years ago, but never really made its way through regarding definitions of school. And we did a little more research into that and discovered that the town is actually not able to regulate the zoning of schools that are, that are registered and administered by the Department of Education. So like Medway, right? We, we don't give them a permit. They just, um, file a site plan, but we don't actually have anything to do with the permitting process for them. So we changed, we updated the language in the bylaws to indicate that and we added a, we added a definition for school comma, commercial, which would be like, you know, a karate school or something of that sort that was a commercial enterprise. And we, um, we added that as a conditional use into, uh, V C A R R and I. Um, so the bylaws are now with these slight updates ready to go. Um, I'm talking to Jonas tomorrow to get it rolling. We need to send out, um, we need to do a um, warning, we need to send it out to neighboring towns, we need to write up a little report. And we are going to warn the next meeting of the planning commission, the March meeting, as our public hearing. After we do that, it will pass to the select board. So we're hoping that within, um, by the middle of this year, we'll be able to get the necessary documents to the natural resources board to, so that they will acknowledge us as a ten acre town. So that's our main thing that we did last night. Um, it's, I, I'm very happy that we got that done and that it's a step toward resolving this issue that's been on our plates for years and years and years. The other thing we did was we, um, we started going through the enhanced energy plan line by line. And we had Barbara Noyes pulling there from Mottland Regional to, um, help us with it. And we're hoping that by the end of next month, we can have that ready. And then it will also go through the process of being appended to the town plan. So we're, we're steaming on ahead. Um, we did, we do want to, in the next couple of months, uh, Jonas wanted us to bring up this issue of, to consider this issue of non-commercial recreation because it turns out that in the bylaws as currently written, that non-commission, non-commercial recreation is a permitted use in a number of our, in a number of our zoning districts, which means you can do it, but you need a permit. And he's wondering if there was a reason in the past why we put that there. I mean, why do people need to have a permitted use for non-commercial recreation? Isn't it some, so we're gonna, we're gonna look into that and try to figure out why that's there. And if it's something that even needs to be in permitted use or if it's exempt. So we, we, we do want to look into that because we realize that that is a bit of an issue. And we, if it's an issue that we can remedy through zoning, we would like to do so. So that's something we've got coming up for the future. I think that's it for my report.
Great, thank you very much. Does anybody have any questions for Jessica?
This is, this, this is Ed, I have a question. I'm just having to think of it. Um, with all these, uh, what about, is there any way of dealing or even should we, with all these Airbnbs? How are they being, is there any regulation on those?
Um, in the, in the zoning bylaws as currently written, I don't believe they address Airbnb's. What, yeah, what we're hoping to do, Ed, is later in the year, after we, after we get this, after we get this very slightly edited version done and, and send it through for the, for the Act two fifty and the ten acre town situation. We're hoping to do a little more in-depth revision over the next year or two of the bylaws. Cause there's a lot of stuff like Airbnb's and we go in there and looking at this non-commercial recreation. And there's a few other situations where you look at it as written. Like there's a, there's a conditional use for like, uh, a horse stable and a swimming pool and, and a couple of other things that could all be sort of lumped into recreational facilities. So there's, there's a lot of, there's a lot of things we might wanna slightly reconsider as we, as we go ahead. So I'll, I'll keep that in mind also about the Airbnb's. It's a good thing to bring up.
Hey, thanks. I'm, I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any questions for Jessica, the planning commission? I guess not. Thank you very much for joining us tonight, Jessica, with your report. Road Foreman's report. I see Keith's phone there somewhere. Yeah.
Hi guys.
Hi Keith.
Not a lot to report. We've obviously been pretty busy. I think we've worked every day but one for the past two and a half weeks. Still haven't gone after the new truck because we had really one good day where the roads haven't been wet and sloppy and that was last Wednesday and we had to spend it working on the equipment to get ready for the next heat race. So tentative date is this Friday, cause that looks like a nice sunny day. Um, as far as the oil undercoating, you can spend four hundred dollars on any type of, like your fluid film that we talked about. Or it's a thousand to eleven hundred if you wanna go with a wax oil type finish. Which, uh, the advantage to the wax oil is that it's, uh, it's a one-time thing where the fluid film or the other oil is going to be, uh, you know, you're gonna have repeat application. So you're paying over and over again through the life of the truck. So I, you know, I don't, I don't know which one is more beneficial. So.
Who applies the wax stuff?
Bushy's and Manchester.
Okay, it's not, it's not something from the dealer?
No. No, it's, uh, it's Bushy's Auto Body in Manchester and also Sean Burns, I guess, does it up in Rutland as well. So. And it's, it's a wax oil, it's more permanent. And I guess over time, there perhaps is an upgrade or something to it. Where the, the other oil is gonna be a repeat application, probably annually. So in, in the long term, the, the wax oil type finishes a better value. You know, I mean, if it's one-time shot over the life of the truck with an upgrade in the middle somewhere, that's, that's not a lot of it. Where the other one could be four hundred dollars each year if you take it back every year and have it reapplied. Now, I don't, I, I don't know that you probably would have to do it every year because, you know, by the time we get done with our spring cleanup after, you know, we pressure wash everything, frame inside now. And you know, my concern is, is whether or not we're going to, uh, to blast it all off of there, you know what I mean? And, and lose efficiency. So.
Well, my experience says that the one shot a year makes a huge difference on the long-term life of the trucks, even though they get washed quite well, quite often. So that's, that's my opinion. I, I haven't seen anything about, I, I don't know anybody that's used the wax stuff, but it reminds me of, of some of the things from earlier that after a few years, it's just a little bit more brittle and it cracks and, and it gets pockets in it. Without a repeat, um, coating every, every year. It just seems like it doesn't, doesn't tend to last as long. But depending on what, what we think we are looking for a long-term of this truck, that may have a ben, uh, you know, have some power in, in our, in your decision, so. I guess since we don't have the truck yet, we can, we can, some, anybody else wanna feed, weigh in on that?
Um, this is Ed, I think Kristen has her hand up.
Hi, this is Kristen. I just did wanna add, I have had my car treated with the wax undercoating from Bucci and I had it done two years ago and I just had my car in for a belated snow tire, um, installation a couple of weeks ago and was told that it's holding up very, very well. Um, I could benefit from getting it again, but not totally necessary. And, um, yeah, Kevin indicated that it's done a really great job and it's holding up very well. Granted, I certainly don't power wash my car, um, ever, but the undercoating has served me well, for what that's worth. Thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah, this is Ed. All I know is, and I don't know, maybe they've made vast improvements. I know at one point you had to take your vehicle back annually with the wax to have them check it. And if they had to do anything, there was a cost. But I thought, I, and I'm not sure Keith, you'd know more about this than I would. This wood film, you have to take that somewhere or can't you just buy like a five gallon can of it and spray it on yourself? I don't know, just asking.
We, we do that ourselves, some Ed, yes, but I think the total application, they have wands and stuff that can get into the tight spots and, you know, we can do the frame and the exposed parts pretty well. But I'm not sure we're equipped to, to do the whole package. The process might be best is to have it, have them do it the first time and get it coated good. And then we can, you know, do our annual touch-ups, which we do anyway. Um, we buy it right at O'Reilly's in Granville and we have the applicator and we spray it on, so. But I'm just thinking, starting right off, fresh and new, it ought to get a professional application at least the first time. That's my thought.
Yeah.
And then, and then we can build on it after that, monitor it, you know, I mean, I don't know, that's kind of where I'm leaning now. I mean, it's, uh, I mean, I paid a lot of money for a professional rust proofing job on a truck. And you know, I, I still did feel in the long run that I, uh, I got value out of it. But when you, and we have negated some of the impact simply because we did put the stainless steel body on it. So we're not talking about the dump body, that should not, we shouldn't have a rust problem there. Remember, we spent twenty-five hundred dollars to sandblast and repaint, you know, midterm of the life expectancy of the truck that we're replacing now. So, you know, that, that twenty-five hundred dollars is a considerable expense, which we should be able to avoid on this one. So, um, and you're basically looking at the, at the cab and the frame, you know, that's what you're looking at, so. And I'm just keeping you guys aware, that's what I know. And before I do anything, we'll have another discussion probably, so.
Okay.
And then we've, we've had some mechanical problems here. We, uh, coolant line on the transmission on the newer Mack truck split. We had to tear that out. That's what we were doing on a nice sunny day. We were hoping to go after the new truck. Uh, and we had Chris Ross weld it up and repair it for us and we've put it back in and it's going again. And, uh, a couple of other incidental things, a coolant tank on the loader and, uh, windshield wipers on the other Mack truck and it's, uh, so yeah, we've been, we've been busy enough, but, uh, no substantial breakdowns, just, uh, just routine maintenance, I guess, so.
Okay, anybody have any questions for Keith? I guess you're off to hook Keith. There are no questions for Keith, thank you, thank you. Is there assessors report tonight, Kristen? Nothing from the assessors. Town clerks memo?
This, this is John. I just direct people to the assessor's annual report in the town report. It's a full page. Uh, Lisa Wright has a lot of information in there. I think the main message is to make sure people get their, uh, homestead declarations in before April fifteenth, so they get the, uh, status of the homestead tax rate.
Okay, excellent, thank you. Town clerks memo, if you'd please, I didn't see Deb. Is she here tonight or not?
This is Kristen. She is not here, but I have her memo. Um, you all, all select board members should have this memo in your email inbox as well. Um, number one, for town meeting, we have sent out about two hundred and sixty early ballots with about one hundred returned thus far. Two, the tabulator memory card has been delayed due to a holdup with a FedEx plant in Oklahoma. We hope to receive the cards this week so that on Monday, we can process all the ballots that we have received up to that point. Three, voting will take place outside in vehicles or at tables on the porch. Voters will have the option to run their ballots and. Voters will have the option to run their ballots into the tabulator or place them in a ballot box for processing by two election officials. Four, there are three highway permits that need to be signed. Five, three liquor licenses need to be signed. Rubber Boot Farm Incorporated, which is the barn restaurant, Sheldon's Market Corporation, and Max Market LLC. And that's all from Deb Hawkins, town clerk.
Okay. So somebody want to make a motion that we sign those three liquor licenses?
This is Ed. I'll make the motion to sign the liquor licenses.
In favor?
Need a second.
In, in favor of those liquor licenses, Ed?
Oh, yeah, yes.
Okay, right. I just, I know that there's two lines on them. Somebody want a second to that motion?
John will.
John will, thank you. So I have a motion made and seconded by Ed, uh, not made by Ed and seconded by John for three liquor licenses, Rubber Boot Farm, Sheldon's Market, and Max Market. All in favor? Ed?
Aye, yes.
Chuck?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
And John?
Yes.
Okay, approved. Anybody have any other questions for Debs? Report? Guess not. Town treasurer's report. Julie?
Hi.
Good evening.
Good evening. I have two warrants that need to be signed. Payroll is $10,077.31. The total accounts payable was $20,621.12. Money's from general fund, $16,081.91. Highway, And the wastewater was $5,485.59. Just as a reminder, the third installment on the wastewater taxes is due on the 10th of March. But we will need to transfer some funds from the savings account to the money market in order to cover expenses that we have right now. We're $673.46 short, but I would recommend that we go ahead and just do 2,000. I'll leave the final decision on that to you. I can continue with my report, or I can pause here for some motions.
Yeah, let's pause and, and deal with that right now.
Okay.
Somebody want to have any just? Okay, great, Ed. Do I hear a second on that?
To transfer 2,000, if that's what she thinks she needs.
Okay. Somebody want a second now?
John will.
John will. Okay, motion made and seconded for Julie to transfer 2,000. All in favor? Ed?
Yes.
Chuck?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And Bob?
Yes.
Okay, motion approved. Thank you.
Sure. Do you want to do the warrants now, and then I'll continue, or do you want me to just?
Well, we'll, I guess, finish that off, and then we'll do the warrants, finish your little memo off.
Okay. I don't have too much more. The next pay period, I will want to do the appropriations, which mostly are done in, after the first collection. But I do hold, we do hold off on the second half of the fire department funds and the highway funds. And I'm hoping that at the same time, I'll have the final cash flow from the state of Vermont to be able to do the education, the final education payment to the Meadowwee District. I did include in the memo your, for you guys to review, just the wrap-up of the tax collection. We did pretty well. I think we were about, I want to say, $3,000 to $4,000 more on our delinquent levy than we were last year, so I think we did really pretty well, all things considered.
Good. Thank you very much.
Sure.
Anybody have any questions regarding any of that for Julie?
This is, this is Chuck.
Chuck.
Uh, I don't know if Julie would have the answer to this question, but I'm looking at my, I more think this is question should be addressed to Kim, but she's not in the audience this evening. So I will ask Julie if she has any idea, but I'm on page 47 of our town report. The rest of you have your reports with you or not?
Be on that table.
Your total delinquent taxes is listed as $23,000 958.65. Bob, total delinquent property is listed as $34,511.29. Now Julie, can you tell me the, what the differences are on those amounts?
So she has sorry. The 23, 958.
Yep, go ahead.
So you're asking about the difference between the 23, 958 and the 34, 511, 29?
Yes.
Um, total. Honestly, I don't know why there's a difference. I do know like, some of these have to do with when the collection period is up. I don't prepare these reports. And I don't fact-checker. I don't even see them before they go into the town report.
Well, that's what I said. I thought the question should be addressed to Kim, but I wish that we could have the answer so that the board is ready for a question from the audience on Monday evening.
Well, I think that you could probably have that answer from her by Monday evening. I think someone should reach out to her and ask that question so that you have it in your pocket for Monday night. Would you like me to reach out to her?
Uh, if you could, please. And she could probably e- put an email in our sites if she, she could.
Sure.
Thank you, Julie.
Okay, we can, everybody look, the warrant's over. Does somebody want to make a motion to approve the warrants?
Yeah, this Ed, I'll make a motion to approve the warrant.
Okay. If I have a second on that?
John will second it.
John, thank you. We have a motion by Ed, seconded by John for the, to approve the warrants. All in favor? Ed?
Yes.
Chuck?
No.
Chuck?
No. No. The reason I'm voting no is because I am a little bit concerned with our attorney's bills that are not current, that we're paying when Julie pays them. The ones that were in tonight's orders were dated still in '20, and we're into the end of the second of '21. So I'm guessing, I, I need to really understand why she's in the rear is giving us bills. So I still vote no.
But, okay, well. Julie, do you have any comment on that?
I don't know where the information is coming from. These are from '20. I, they're not.
You've got, you have three invoices there that all have 20 on them, Julie. This is 21.
What do you mean that they have 20 on them, I guess, is my, like, where is?
You have, you, if you look, when you gave us the the pages that had all the amounts added up to equal why they were billed at what, what they were billed for, but
I, I, I am not seeing what you're seeing. Are you referring to the invoice edit list that I send?
You have, yes, the, you have three invoices of the attorneys, one for $5,000 something, one for just under 200, and the other, I think, was that 600?
There's, there's one for 2,600, there's one for 609, there's one for 156.40. I don't see where there is a date on them of 2020.
What's your, what's your numbers to the le- to the left of that?
The 11, 7, 20, 3, 30 is the line item for legal fees in the budget. It's simply the line item number. 11 means the general fund, 7 means that it's an expense, and 20 is just a certain category of expenses. It's not a date.
Then if that's the understanding, I'll change my to a yes.
Hey? John?
Yes.
Yes, and Bob?
Yes.
Okay, so in, the warrant's all passed. Thank you, Julie. Is there any other questions for Julie? If not, I guess, I'll set, Julie, do you have anything else to add tonight?
Nope.
All right. Thank you very much.
Yep.
Emergency management? Nothing from Bob tonight, okay? And health officer, nothing from?
Nothing. We're at the tail end. This is Kristen. We're at the end of our month, so nothing to report.
Towards first, right? Wastewater treatment. I guess the last, last we heard is that Julie got a whole bunch of stuff pulled together. I meant to thank her. Thank you, Julie, for pulling that together for the, for the wastewater this morning. And so as far as I know, our application, so see if I can figure out how to get through. Yeah. On behalf of the town of Polat, please attach a priority list application for the West West Polat wastewater treatment facility upgrade. And that, that was the from the CW SRF priority list. That was her application. All the pertinent information was added today that she needed, so that's all in process. So that's where we stand with that. Other than that, I haven't heard anything, anything different or any issues that they're having. So I guess we're good. Anybody else have any questions on the wastewater treatment facility? Okay. Older unfinished business.
This is Kristen. There was nothing indicated on the agenda specifically for older unfinished.
Okay. So it appears to me that the people have moved out of the trailer on Route 153 that the town owns. Would you say the same, Chuck?
Lights are still on, aren't they?
Yeah, I heard the lights are still on, but I, it doesn't appear that there's any people around there.
Yeah, this, this is.
Okay, I would make, I would make the motion that you take the doors, take a couple of windows out of it, make it so it is not inhabitable by any squatter.
Right. Well, what we have to do, what we have to do is, is because we serve papers on the residence, this is a, this is a conversation I was having with, with Merrill today, that we have to get an affidavit that, that says that they're out, so that we can lock the doors and stuff like that. So I'm going to talk to Dave Ricard tomorrow and see if he can go there and, and do a a physical check to make sure that they're out, and we can, that way we can, we can complete this, this eviction process, and then just move forward with getting that cleaned up and stuff. So that's, that's where we stand with that. It seems like we're in.
Another expense, that's all.
This is Frank Mike.
Yes.
So, so the process is you have to evict them. Ricard was, and, and go through a formal paperwork process, and then you can change the locks. Is that it?
Yeah, we have to get a, we have to get an affidavit stating, someone has to give us an affidavit stating they have vacated the premises. Basically, that's all, that's all, that was the last part of it. It just, it, it was a long time. They, the sheriffs couldn't serve the papers. They were never around to get the papers, eviction papers and stuff, so that just made it drag on even farther.
Okay, thank you.
I'll talk to Dave tomorrow. Okay. Anything else for older unfinished business? Oh, Ray?
Yeah, can you hear me now?
Yes, I can. Go ahead, Ray.
I was wondering how the penalties were going on the Purham case.
I believe that that's still in the hands of the DRB. I don't think they've made a final decision on that case yet.
When did they, did they have a meeting already?
They had one meeting a week or two ago.
Okay, so, well, I know Keith's on there. He could probably answer this question. How many days do they have from the meeting to notify Purham? 30 days?
Keith, do you have?
Our deliberative session, deliberative session is tomorrow night.
Oh, okay.
Okay, and so we have so many days to hold the hearing, and then we have 30 days after that to render a conclusion. So we'll have our deliberative session tomorrow night, and I believe Merrill will write the decision for us. And that, that should cover all angles if there's any. Then there'll be another appeal process available if, if whatever party decides to do that, so.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other older unfinished business? Okay, any new business? Kristen, you wanted to?
Yes, this is Kristen. I just wanted to speak with the board regarding the warning for the organizational meeting. Traditionally, that meeting is held the day after town meeting, which would be Wednesday, March 3, 2021. Would the board like for me to put together the warning for that?
Yes, I believe so. Does anybody have any other feeling? Okay, yes, yes, please do.
Okay.
We have to. Oh, go ahead.
I was just going to say, so this is, this is the meeting where, you know, the new, all the incoming incoming select board members for this upcoming year are sworn in and, and whatnot, so I just, I'm not familiar with how that's communicated, or if there's anything else that the board needs for me to do other than putting together that agenda and warning.
I think basically we do that, but there's a whole bunch of those things that we have to prove.
Yeah. Yeah, I think. Yeah, I will connect with Deb because generally she is in attendance too, to do the swearing in. So I'll just make sure that that's on her radar as well, and then you, the select board will see the agenda and it just goes through the whole list of appointing and reappointing folks for all of the various seats, so I will go ahead and get on that, so it's seven PM, fine on Wednesday, March third via Zoom?
That sounds fine with me.
Okay.
Anybody else have any? Okay, I guess not, everybody else is good with it, they didn't speak up, so. Is there any other new business? I guess nothing, huh?
I would like one more time to speak. As you all know, this is my last meeting with the town's select board, it's been a pleasure to work with the other bunch of you, and I wish you all, all the best in the future. Ed, I wish you the best on your reelection ride-in. Rich Ullot on his three-year position for the select board, filling my vacancy as I'm not running. And John Malcolm. They would, those three have my support, and I hope that they would all have the remaining voters in the town of Polat and West Polat. Thanks again for everything you guys did while I was here for these number of years. Wish you the best.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Chuck.
Thank you.
Thank you for serving. Now we have public comment, who else has public comment tonight, Julie?
I just wanted to quickly remind everybody that tomorrow is the school board's annual meeting, it will be same place as we all are, Zoom. It's going to be super fun and exciting. I hope that people can make it. That's it.
Thank you.
Julie? Is it still the same numbers as our select board meeting to get on that?
I don't think so, because it's being, it's being held on the BRSU Zoom account, but there are, it's published on the BRSU website, how to get in, it's published on Deb's Facebook page, how to get in, and if anyone needs me to get you hooked up with a phone number or a link, please reach out to me. My board, my school board email is listed in the annual report, and you can call the town office if you need to. And I can, I can help with that.
I'm pretty sure Mrs. Whedon wants to attend, so I'll, I'll look at information, oh, thank you.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you. Who else has public comment?
This is Kristen, Ray's hand is raised in the, in the group.
I didn't, I, I can't see everybody on my screen, so.
Yeah, can you hear me, Mike?
Yeah, go ahead, Ray.
This is Ray. I didn't know if anybody happened to see the New York Times today. There was a big article in there regarding Daniel Banyer in Slate Ridge and the town of Polat and the state of Vermont. You might want to read it. Quite interesting. I thought I'd bring that up. Have a good evening.
This is Frank Mike.
Go ahead, Frank.
The planning commission is rolling right along very well under Jessica's guidance with the energy direction. And we're using Zoom to review the documents in an efficient way on a line-by-line basis, it's very informative and easy to follow. If anybody wants to join in and has public comments or anything as we go along, the planning commission would welcome everybody in the town of Polat to participate. There's some very interesting issues that are being hashed out, and that, I could explain them, but really show up at the meeting, have fun, and we'll look forward to seeing you there, bye. Thank you.
Thank you, Frank. Anybody else have any public comment? Ray, you have your hand up again?
No, no, Mike, I'm sorry, I just didn't take it down.
Did take it down, okay.
Thank you.
I guess we're, we're all set, huh?
I just have one, Julie's hand is up now. I just have one quick thing, this is Kristen, if anybody needs, I'm not the techiest person in the world, but if anybody needs any support in preparation for town meeting, I would like to offer my availability and witty presence to help, so you're welcome to email me at polatselectboard@mail.com or pass that email address along. I, at the very least, can provide some helpful articles or YouTube videos that might, might help you out, but I just implore everybody to make sure to spread the word to vote and be involved. And thank you to this current select board for a wonderful, wonderful, almost three years together, so it's been real fun, this whole group.
Yeah.
Did anyone hear Kristen when she offered a Zoom cocktail party, because that's what I heard? Zoom cocktail party, hey! Same time, two weeks from now.
Funny.
I'll make a motion that we adjourn, Michael.
All right, Chuck made a motion, do we have a second?
All second, this Ed, all second. Yes.
Chuck?
I hate to leave, but I'm in favor of yes.
Good night. John?
Yes.
And Bob?
Yes, good night, everyone.
Good night, everyone, good luck to all your candidates out there, we'll see you Wednesday night.
Good night.